Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the Monday, March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting to order. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Trollop for monitoring the last meeting for me. I had a funeral in the family and couldn't be here at that time, so I know it went smoothly, and hopefully I can do it as smoothly today. First of all, roll call, Ms. Peck.
John Krieger.
Here.
Pat McKee.
Here.
Cody Nicolai.
Here.
Joanna Reyes.
Here.
Cory Sillers.
Here.
Lance Trollop.
Here.
Karen Vandenberg.
Here.
Lee Webster.
Here.
Jim Boucher.
Here.
If you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
It is the mission of the Wausau School District to advance student learning, achievement, and success. And do we have any speakers? We do not, so we will skip Agenda Item Number Five and move right on to Six. Approving the Consent Agenda: Appointments, Additional Staff, Replacement Staff, Contract Increases, Separations, Resignations, Contract Decreases and Terminations, Leaves of Absence, Retirements, Regular Session of February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and Special Session of February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Payment of Bills, Budget, Status, and Investment Report, Season Nine Shared Services Contract, Donations to the District, American Online Giving Foundation, Judd S. Alexander Foundation, Jim Yonkey and Jane Yonkey, Johnson, and Wayne Hurting. I am seeking a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion so carries. Continuing on, Old Recurring Business. Share Preliminary Design Plans for Wausau West High School. Has Referendum-Funded Improvement Plans Developed for Each Facility. The Board Will See Updates When the Designs Reach Fifty Percent Completion. Current Plans for Wausau West or Wausau Senior High School Will Be Shared with the Board at This Time. Floor Is Yours.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. My name is Sharon Gold. I am Senior Program Manager for Nexus Solutions, and I'm here to present with Jeb Stepbauer the update for Wausau Senior High School. So with that, we'd like to get started. So, next slide please. So again, we want to show the existing referendum concepts that were proposed for West High School. We look, we have two additions in the back, and we have several heavily remodeled areas throughout. So as we move through the presentation today, I'll be able to identify the areas that are changing, just for your information. Next. So with that, we've had nine design meetings with the district leadership team and the building design committee, and we've had nineteen, and there'll be more, user group meetings where we're meeting with the principals, maintenance teachers, and a lot of the specialty groups that we're affecting, which includes the special education, FIAD, athletics, theater, music, the front office staff, student services staff, the kitchen food service staff, library miscellaneous. In the short term, we're going to start meeting with the foods, the face team, to start getting their feedback on some of the additional areas that we're going to be remodeling. So, next. So with that, I just want to show you the site plan that we have here. We have now three additions, so that's a change from the initial plan, and we can talk through that as we go through. Not too much has changed in the front office addition. That layout's fairly similar. The athletics and the locker room, that's a little bit streamlined compared to what we originally had proposed. And then we do have the third addition, which is a storage addition on the southeast corner of the building. Other areas that might not be the easiest to see is you can see where we're restoring the demolition, the demolished areas. We are removing the portable classrooms, or those will be removed through the project to be able to accommodate for the space of the new music theater addition on the west side of the building. We are adding additional parking on the southwest corner of the site. Any additional parking would be, you know, a future conversation. And then we are redoing the old front entrance, restoring that into grass and walkways to be able to make that new front entrance really pop. Next. So here's a rendering of the new front entrance. You can see it's like really majestic and welcoming. There's, you know, feedback that came in from the design committee on how that would look. And just to kind of bring up this topic, is it is coordinated for any future addition, there's space so that front entrance would remain, you know, if the district in the future chooses to add future floors to that front space. Next. So here's the rendering for the athletic section in the back. You can see there is a place to put a logo in the building name, so we wanted to include that to highlight it. That's the view that you would see from the sports fields to the north, and you can just see the open and welcoming space for the athletics facility that we're adding. So with that, we just want to talk through the overall floor plan. I have three areas generally identified. We have the additions in the tan. We have the renovations in purple and updates, which is general maintenance items that are shown in the fieldhouse for green. So areas that we're talking about today is the front office addition, the theater addition and renovation, the kitchen and the common area work that we're doing, the athletics addition, locker room updates, fieldhouse updates, again, that's the flooring and some bleacher work, and then the classroom updates as we move through the building. Is there anything you want to add to that?
Not at this time.
Okay, cool. All right, so with that, we have the front office space. So we had many meetings regarding this area. We're looking at essentially a new secure entrance that's consistent with the district design agreement that we are moving through with. We have a reception area. We have a work area identified for different staff, some conference rooms, storage. We do have additional toilet rooms that are required by code and to help serve the front office, and potentially to do some overflow from the theater space. We're looking at a mailroom, and, you know, we did consider future plans within that front office space. So next. And all, so this is the, almost the whole addition. The addition was big enough that it was hard to not crop it and still have you be able to see how that floor plan's working. So the auditorium renovations, this is consistent with the referendum scope of work as well. We're redoing finishes to upgrade the auditorium theater, you know, to a more modern look. We're upgrading systems, lighting, dimmer racks, curtains, the audiovisual systems, stage lighting. We're adding some ADA seating, and we're adding a lift to be able to accommodate ADA with the stage and the floor in the front of the building. The addition includes the green room changing areas, toilet room, storage, and a scene shop, and this was pretty challenging because there's a lot of grade change between the stage height, which is about seven feet below the grade outside. So we worked, you know, with a pretty comprehensive team to get that to work. So the theme we're seeing is, you know, we have some complicated geometry in this building, and, you know, we are working through to make sure that we're accounting, accommodating that. One thing I do want to point out is, again, we did look at the front additions to handle a future second and third floor. And so on the left, on the east end of the addition, if you look, you can see the ending of a stairwell for discharge for the upper floors. And based on the feedback we received, we're not including an elevator or transition to the other, to the rest of the building. That would be handled in the future at the same time those additions would occur.
I would just add, Sharon talked about the lift within the theater, but getting down to it on the side, we've added storage, but then just south of that, that other corridor is a ramp. So that's one of the things that we haven't had at Wausau West. It was, you're either at the top, or you could be on stage, but you couldn't get anywhere else in the auditorium, and this will allow, allow for kids or grandparents or anybody else who has some mobility issues to access more of the auditoriums.
Okay. So next, we're looking at is the music wing. So this again is another area that there's, I'll just call it geometric challenges that we're working through right now. So we are working currently with the band, choir, and orchestra teachers to be able to get the feedback on how their spaces currently work. And so the main needs that we're still working through is storage, which includes musical instrument storage. So, you know, we're identifying rooms and casework to be able to do that. We're working on getting some good-sized practice and ensemble rooms. We're leveling out the floor to meet ADA. That's actually a little more complicated than just flattening out the floor because we have a ceiling height concern, but again, we're working through it, and we should have a solution that, you know, we all agree to. And one of the other things that we're really working on too is getting visibility into those practice rooms. So, you know, staff has the ability to see what's going on and communication and things like that, so. Okay? So the next area we're looking at is student services and special education. So the student services offices and support areas is going into the old front office space. So when that's freed up, we can remodel this space, and it's mainly guidance rooms, social services, reception, some meeting rooms. Pretty straightforward. We've been working with that team to get their feedback. And then the other half of that space to the east, we are relocating the educational spaces that were used in the portable classrooms. So we're working through that right now. So we're adding a needs lab. We can talk about that a little bit. And then if you go to the plan just across the hallway to the north, that's the life skills classroom, and we're going to be rearranging the toilet rooms over there. So we're respecting the needs of the students and allowing for the men's staff room. You know, we're going to be rearranging those a little bit to better serve both of those groups.
Currently, the bathroom facility for our ID classroom is outside in the hallway. This design puts it inside the classroom, which I think preserves a lot of the dignity for some of the students throughout the day. Things happen, so I'm excited about that.
And we do have a couple sensory rooms, and we're still identifying how the bottom two rooms are, what best serves the population that those classrooms serve. Okay, next. Okay, so this slide is probably not as easy to follow along. If you look on the key plan, there's two areas shown. They're not very close to each other, but this has been a lot of discussion. So with the changes that we're working through, one of our main goals is to help maintain the number of classrooms that we have and make sure that the classroom use is, it's a flexible space. So for example, we're probably not going to turn a classroom into a specifics robotics lab, but the robotics lab would share classroom space with other areas. And so with that being said, we have the foods and the face remodeling going on, and if there's a future direction to expand the foods program, it makes a lot more sense to have those classrooms closer to the CTE wing. And we've had a lot, like some level of discussion on this too, and to make sure if we're retrofitting, you know, in the future for like a future culinary lab or something like that, that the space is allocated and allows for that to happen. So this is a little bit of the domino effect that we run into sometimes, and so with the team's input, we are going to be moving the face renovations into where the current health room is, and then renovating the face room, the two foods rooms in the southeast corner of the seventies addition to standard classroom so they could be shared for multiple purposes. So we just wanted to make sure that we're always looking ahead and making as much as we, based on the information we know today, that we're still keeping the future in mind. Okay? So with that, we have the PE and athletics addition and remodeling spaces. You can see the purple area is the locker room remodel, and the beige is where we're demoing out the existing fitness area, adding and new, and then relocating the girls' locker rooms from where the kitchen will currently take over that space. So we have the fitness and agility training. We're working with the athletics staff to get locker room layouts, or not locker room layouts, the equipment layout. It's roughly the same square footage as what was there, but we're looking at having a more efficient layout so it, you know, it works and serves the needs. And then with that, we have, you know, the locker room remodel and then a mechanical space above to serve. So if you remember some of those older referendum plans, there's some work on the second floor. We've simplified some of that, and I can touch on that in a little bit on why, but we still have the mechanical space upstairs. So we found a simpler ADA solution to be able to get up to the shelf. So do you have anything that's probably add with the locker rooms?
Yeah, well, I guess the one thing, we do gain a little bit of space. Our current layout has a middle section that houses our HVAC equipment, and so without that in there, that kind of, even though it's about the same size, it gives us a little bit of a bump anyway because it's not in there, so that'll be helpful.
Okay, next. So part of this project is to remodel the kitchen area, the big food service kitchen, and gain some seating area into the common area, into the common spaces. So we're at the point in design where we have a good kitchen layout. We've met with food service multiple times to make sure the new layout flows, is more efficient. So you can see there is the equipment plan. It's not finalized yet, so we don't want to spend too much time on it, but it does actually free up additional space in the cafeteria. We did look at having an addition to support the kitchen receiving deliveries, things like that, and it was determined that that extra addition wasn't really that helpful. And so, you know, based on the staff who would be using that, and so we were able to, I guess, eliminate a small addition for a receiving area in the back. We did rearrange the doors, the location of the storage, and so the deliveries can come in and out. And then we were able to maintain the three different food service areas for the students, and we worked through like dish drop off with point of sale and food pickup and things like that. So one of the benefits of doing it this way is we were able to, with the kitchen being more efficient, move the commons wall up three, about three or four feet. And as far as space goes, I'm just pulling up the counts of the seating areas where we had, we were able to add an extra one hundred and ninety-four seats to the common areas with the layout. So I guess the next area, if you look at the southeast corner, we've, we did convert storage, which is what caused that other small addition to happen to the southeast portion of the building. We did convert that to a, you know, classroom, community room, shared space along those lines, and it could also be used potentially as a cafeteria overflow space if needed. So it's a multipurpose. The location's great for exterior access. If you have a community room, it lends itself to a lot of different things. But we all compromised at an earlier meeting to offset the equipment that's stored in that storage room. That's where that small storage space is added to the southeast corner. Does that make sense? All right, next. Oh, sorry.
Well, if we're, are we going to talk about that space later?
No.
So just, just another addition, which kind of worked out as a win-win in that situation is if you've been in our fieldhouse, especially during track season, and we have our portable bleachers kind of just tucked away in the corners, and they're sometimes this close to that track, and so that's always been a trouble spot for us. With the storage being over there in a new build, we are going to be able to move those bleachers into that storage area and really increase the area that we can use within the fieldhouse and also help with the safety piece of things. So we're excited about that.
So here we have the fieldhouse with that addition. We were talking about just general indoor flooring replacement. We added the storage. So this is where we're talking a little bit about the ADA access to the shelf up above, is we did look at multiple options on the best way to proceed with that. And for the amount of use, the balance, a chairlift would actually comply with code, comply with ADA, and allow for that access. Again, we ran into some geometry issues up here, up on the shelf to be able to get access from other points of view. So the chair, the chairlift was a cost-effective solution to be able to manage the different needs to be able to get up there. So as a team, we agreed that that was a different way to proceed without going into heavy construction to get an elevator into that upper corner. So, okay, next. So going up to the second floor, we don't have a whole lot of renovation work. We are looking at adding some toilets to the second floor for ADA access. And one thing that we did confirm as we went through this is just to make sure the toilet count's matched throughout the building. So we met all the code requirements for toilet, toileting, but also, you know, trying to make sure that the location's matched with the needs of the second floor. And really, that's all we're, the main scope of work that we're doing there. Next. So the third floor, we're looking at redoing a lot of the seating and light remodeling in the large group instruction spaces. So we're just getting started on that. So we're looking at different ways to lay out the seating for student, I guess, student learning to improve the space, the functionality of the space. And then the other half of that is we are starting to look into the library, some of the light remodeling up there, some small group instruct breakout rooms, things like that. And so we're still working through some of those items. So we just started getting, meeting with the library user groups.
The other thing in the large group rooms, we're planning for some ADA accessible places to, because right now there are steps, so there'd be some carve-outs for places for kids to sit.
Okay. So this, I just summarized all the other items that are building-wide or in miscellaneous locations throughout the building, is we are going to be painting a lot of the exterior doors. We're replacing some of the exterior doors. We're replacing a lot of the storefront or the glass windows in the front of the building, mostly in the nineteen seventies addition. We're looking at replacing ceilings, flooring, finishes, casework throughout the building. We're redoing the stair finishes, looking into some branding and things like that. ADA where the toilet grab bars, pipe wraps, ADA signage on the doors, replacing a lot of the door hardware for ADA. And then we're doing some elevator work throughout. So, you know, it's still a list, but this is about the time we're about to get started on these areas of work in the building, so we're starting to develop those in a lot more detail. So with that, to summarize, the mechanical systems, we're adding cooling to the locker rooms. We're modifying the HVAC systems, you know, for all our remodeled spaces as we walk through band, orchestra, choir, kitchen, the commons, locker rooms, classrooms, all the areas we're in that we're moving walls. And then we're extending HVAC systems to the new additions of front office, the locker room fitness, and to the small storage areas needed. So, you know, a lot of the HVAC work here is more of a reaction to, to the remodeling in addition to adding cooling in certain areas. Plumbing, again, it's the same thing. We're extending the plumbing systems, modifying the plumbing systems for the remodeled spaces, kitchen, commons, toilet rooms, locker rooms, all those, you know, throughout the building. There's sinks located, you know, in the band and orchestra rooms, things like that, so we'll be addressing those. And then we're extending the plumbing system into the new additions, front office, those toilet rooms, locker rooms, fitness, throughout the building. So plumbing again is more of a reaction to the rest of the work that's being done within the building. Electrical, again, we're extending power, lighting, telecom, security. We're extending it into the additions. We're remodeling it where needed, where the renovations are occurring. We're bringing the building up to LED. Part of the building's already LED, but we're going to extend that system to the rest of the building. We're looking at sight lighting for LED, replacing the fire alarm system, extending the mass notification system to new and remodeled spaces, adding the auditorium infrastructure for PA, AV, the dimmer racks for the lighting, theater lighting, things like that. And then some maintenance work, and then we're still evaluating if we're going to new electrical service to handle the additional load. So with that, any questions?
First of all, what will the final capacity be of West after all of this? Student capacity?
So we're not, I guess, as the design engineer, we are looking at, I mean, you know, I can't necessarily ask that, answer that question because we're following the referendum scope to be able to utilize the space as much as we can. So I don't have a specific number for you, but there's been a lot of studies going on.
Does anybody have a specific number?
I have a number of sixteen ninety-four.
Okay.
It's recent capacity of that building.
All right, so that puts us under what the projected enrollment is supposed to be if the, the three grades, ten, eleven, twelve, come together. Just for...
I've got...
Seventeen hundred and sixty-three was the last...
Seventeen twenty-four, seventeen twenty-nine, seventeen twenty-four, sixteen fifty.
Okay.
If I fall off twenty-five, we will be under capacity.
Okay.
By forty-two.
All right, and what about parking? Was this increasing, I wasn't following in the beginning, was this increasing the number of student parking spaces?
Yeah, so currently, our design, give me a sec. We have six hundred and sixty-three parking spots.
Okay.
The current base referendum scope would add forty, and additional scope could add up to sixty to seventy-two spaces along the front if the drive were to be redone. That front access with the bus. The last one, a range of sixty to seventy, and it depends on whether it's perpendicular.
Total parking spots.
Oh, I have to do math.
Six hundred, sixty-seven, thirty-one.
Seven, seven oh three, seven seventy.
That's just for students? Or is that total?
That's total.
Okay, how many additional will we need for students, considering ten, eleven, twelve, you're going to have exponentially more students that are eligible to drive?
So the site easily allows, that's the additional sixty to seventies along the front.
How many will we need?
So I don't have that total.
Based on how many students are going to be with you.
No, I understand. I'm just saying, there should be some projection if we're going to shove these kids in there and more of them are going to be driving eligible, we should have some idea how many parking spots we're going to need.
What big school would have identified the student parking area, and you'd probably be able to give us, what, six hundred? I mean, you could give us a number.
Well, one of the difficulties we have here, though, Pat, is we gave them direction to not consider the combination of the two schools and not use any referendum funds to account for that.
I know, I get into that.
So she's presenting to us strictly based on the referendum scope and not adding anything addition.
Sure.
So we would have to decide separately if we want to add additional space, parking space capacity.
Okay, fair enough. To your point, Lance, not to focus on the combination of schools. So kids that graduate in May, what is it going to say on the front of their diplomas?
This coming May?
Yeah. What school?
Wausau West.
And in May of twenty-four, what's it going to say?
Wausau West High School.
In May of twenty-five?
I don't know yet.
No, it's, it'll say Wausau West according to your plan. So my question is, why is the labeling in all of this saying Wausau High School? What is Wausau High?
Wausau Senior High School?
What is Wausau Senior High? We have zero kids going to a Wausau Senior High right now.
We're just trying to reflect the action we were doing earlier.
But you're completely disrespecting the staff and the students that go there. If they're watching this right now, they're going to say, I don't go to a Wausau Senior High. What is Wausau Senior High?
Certainly not my intent.
Regardless if it's intent, that's reality.
I've not heard that. This is the first I heard of it.
Well, I, this is the first people are seeing of it.
I'm going to go back because I followed up on your question. I'm just asking, how many parking spots do we have this year? Do we have Wausau West?
So the total I have, I don't have it broken out. I just have the total spots of six hundred and sixty-three on site.
And then we have future parking area. Yeah, that's, that's... I don't have it broken out, I hope we do.
Mm-mm.
Yeah. So that's the number that's... Other questions? Couple of questions about the fieldhouse.
Okay.
How many seats, how many will we sit in that?
So I don't have the specific count, but it's about seven hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
About seven hundred and thirty-seven.
Seven thirty-seven. Yeah, and we'll lose, we'll lose a couple seats with... Yeah, and we'll lose, we'll lose a couple of seats with, with what we're doing. That will be replaced with kind of opens, open like maybe a spot for wheelchair or something like that, so. Yeah, the ramp is on the outside of the theater though.
It's going to be on the outside.
Yes. So that, that, that's like in the, just south of the theater in the new, that new addition, and that'll get you down there. Then you get over, and that's where they're, then you get over by the stage and there'll be a lift that can go to both levels.
There's two light poles or pipes, one on each, one on the left, one on the right?
Right now.
Correct. No, that wasn't, we weren't including that in the scope. And, and one thing is the current scope of work does not include replacing the theater seats, it was just modifying the few to bring up to ADA. We'll be taking a few away for the extra space.
Anything else? There are no other questions.
Thank you.
There we go. Uh, there was a request to explore a little bit more about the possibility of staggering the implementation. If you can forward Cassie to one more. People, request for staff feedback. So we did the same survey to our staff about risks and benefits related to a staggered implementation. This is the, the yes, no vote, obviously, slight majority, fifty-seven would prefer not to stagger. And then in the next slides, you have a kind of a summary or representation of the, some of their feedbacks. So in terms of the risks, there's a lot of comments about the sense that, you know, change is difficult. If we extend it, that, that sense of being in change is, is extended. You can read that one here. And again, some of the risks about limiting opportunities for movement for staff. Those are some of the, some of the risks that they cited. And the next slide is some of the benefits. I think we've heard some of these, you know, give people time to adjust. You know, I guess just to react to any, any concerns that happen during the implementation, so. I think that was just those three, well, there's, and then there, we just reiterated again, the, the feedback from the, this is the fifty members of our admin team and their general reaction to it. Any questions or direction about a staggered implementation?
I just have a comment because I know I was probably one of the leading voices in wanting to hear from the staff. So first, just thank you for doing that. I really appreciate this feedback, I think it's super valuable. And I've actually had dozens of conversations with teachers in the past two weeks and heard this overwhelmingly as well. So I really appreciated it because I, I'm, I'm certainly not inflexible about this must be staggered. And really, I feel like the administrative team, teams and staff are the ones with the boots on the ground that are most impacted by whether or not they need more time for this to be implemented with excellence. And so I was really grateful to get this information and the benefits, certainly there's benefits to doing both ways. And so I was just really grateful to get this and really agree that if, if overwhelmingly those who have to implement it majority feel like it's better to do it all at once so that there's more opportunities for staff to be mobile in their decisions, then, then that's what's most important to me, that everybody's on the same page about that. So I guess, I just wanted to comment that and appreciate you getting the information for all of us, so, thanks.
Thank you. I would echo Karen's sentiments in what she just referenced. I won't reiterate it all, but I too had conversations with some teaching staff and, and they expressed, you know, these very same things that were, that you brought forward today. So just, I would echo that same sentiment.
Yeah, I was actually surprised it was even close based on the feedback that I've received since the last meeting because almost all of the teaching staff, anyway that I've spoken to have said it's going to be better if we do it all at once because of staff movement in this building or that building and the only, the question that I have is whether or not, whether or not that has to be decided now? Or is that something that you can continue to monitor throughout the planning process?
Yeah, I, I was going to mention that, you know, this is good feedback, but yes, this is, as we continue to, to plan the changes, that's a, a question that we still will have before us. So we don't have to make that decision right now.
Yeah, my comment is, is that except for me and Pat, I thought you guys were kind of, I thought the implementation and staggered effect was in the motion. First of all, and second, I thought that's why you voted, partially voted yes, that you're going to do a staggered effect, so.
We are, we're starting off with the high schools, and then we're going to work on the implement for the junior highs and the elementarys.
So the, what the board took action on was the, the five through twelve and, and the decision to merge some high school or some elementary schools. But the, the decision on which elementary schools would be repurposed and how they would be repurposed, that work is ongoing. So we will be bringing that to the board in, in the future. But the implementation, the actual changeover, that could still happen altogether in the fall of twenty-five. Or we'll continue to look at, you know, the benefits and risks of a staggered implementation and, and we'll come back to that topic in the future.
As I recall, Corey, about that, that was the question that I asked. But it wasn't that it has to be staggered, it was will staggered implementation be a possibility with the passage? And that was affirmed, that it was a possibility, but not that that was the route that it would go, but just that it was a possibility, that it could be that way.
Yeah, well, none, none of this is necessarily the route that we're going to go. Because it's supposed to be a continued and ongoing conversation, which I feel like we're trying to get over little homes and eliminate the possibility of the nine of us changing the direction at certain points. And I believe it was on the slide, so therefore I think it would be part of the motion that was presented on February thirteenth.
Well, I think that over the course of two and a half years of planning, there's going to be continuous things brought back to us as we get step by step along the way of, of meeting board approval. And, and that may include changes. I mean, there, we've talked about that in many meetings, that there, we may get to some sort of issue or, or problem that is insurmountable, or some recommendation might, there might be changes along the way, but you know, it, it's, it's not like this is just going to go away now and then we're not going to look at it again until two and a half years from now. This is going to be an ongoing board topic for the next two years.
Absolutely, yeah, I, I would agree with that. And Corey, you're right, there's, there's a number of things. I think in the last presentation or two presentations ago, there was a list of things that would at least require board approval, but there's a lot of other other work that's going to be coming back to, in terms of conversation or exploration or clarification. So, yeah, there is, there is a lot of work that's going to be coming.
So as of right now, are we working on any of the, like, are we doing any of the high schools? Eighth, eights to nine and ten to twelve, are we working on that?
Right now, we're working more on the elementary schools.
Okay.
The, the five, twelve was outlined in that February thirteen motion. But the elementary schools still need some, some significant work, and that's actually part of the reason I wanted to bring this childcare topic in front of the board tonight for a little direction. But I'll wait for that until people have their other questions answered.
Are there any other questions, so that we could go to this? So you have some updates with childcare?
Yeah, I want to make sure that we understand generally what, what it is we want to do with this, these early learning centers, our four K and our early, and our, and our, this childcare solution. So again, going back to the why, why are we even interested in starting a childcare partnership? One, we've talked about it benefits our own employees. We, we have, when we hire people, one of the first things they ask is, you know, what's the childcare situation? We have lost some potential hires because they weren't able to find high-quality childcare. So we think it sets us up for success as a, as an employer. And again, is a benefit, could be a benefit to our employees. Again, part of the why, we are involved in a community-wide conversation about childcare. And within Marathon County, there's a need for about two thousand additional high-quality childcare licensed spots. So, so we want, again, we want to be part of that. Thinking about the children, you know, the more ready they are when they enter school, the more successful they are later. So that early learning component is vitally important, it's, it's one of our shared interests. So even before they get to our, our doors for, for school. And again, we, if we can, we'd like to be part of that solution for the, for the, for the whole community. So that's the why. The next slide, Cassie. So this is where I want to get some direction from the board. So what we are proposing again is to create probably two early learning centers that would serve children ages birth through five years old. And within that early learning center, there would be both childcare and our four K programs. The, as, we would give that space to our partner, and I think it's, it's safe to say it would likely be the YMCA at this point, they have the most capacity to, and a really good track record of, of offering high-quality childcare and maintaining employees in the community. And so in return for, you know, that investment of a, of a space to them at no cost, we would then, our employees would have guaranteed access to some number of slots. We haven't worked on the numbers yet. We don't know what the cost would be of the number of, of childcare slots. The employees would still pay for, the, the key is to give them the, you know, to give them access to high-quality childcare. Within that, that early learning center, other businesses, part of the, the model is that other businesses would also pay for a certain number of spots, slots. So that's the, the guaranteed revenue that the childcare partner needs in order to make this, this model work. That's a model that is being explored across this community. So we would be one of the first, but that's kind of the, the general model. So then the why, in this case, they would manage the, the childcare employees, they would hire them, they would run that program. We would simply provide a space and then have the benefit of, of offering spots to our employees. Let me pause there because I think that's kind of the heart of, of this. Before we start talking about which schools and what it might look like and all the renovation, I want to make sure the board is comfortable with the concept of this business model.
I have a question. So if we are providing a space, or we, as in the taxpayers and supporters of the Wausau School District, are obviously taking away a big cost to the childcare provider. So I think that we really need to make sure that as much as possible, we're benefiting the Wausau School District. Whether that is prioritizing our employees, prioritizing the four K students who are there, we of course would, would want to make sure that we encourage people to sign up for and enroll in our four K and making sure that they have wraparound care would, would help that. You know, I, I don't know what else we could do. Siblings in the district, for example, I hear from people who I, I had to move my child out of the district because my younger child could only file childcare in Marathon or something. I think, I think before we get to that other businesses part of it, we have to make sure that we're maximizing the benefit to the Wausau School District because we're providing a Wausau School District space. If that makes sense.
Yes.
That it does help the whole community, and, and that even indirectly still helps the whole community because it of course takes the strain off of other locations and other providers in it. So it helps the whole community, but if we're using Wausau School District property, I think we have to maximize the benefit to Wausau, to Wausau School District before we say, okay, then fill in with, we have some extra space, so let's fill in.
Yeah, let me, can I respond to that just briefly? In our research with our own employees, and Tabitha, if I'm, if I'm off on this, help me out, but I, I think we had about fifty people say, fifty of our employees indicate that they needed access to high-quality childcare, they couldn't find it, am I about right? Oh, is it more than fifty? Of our own?
Correct.
Okay. So obviously there's plenty of capacity, you know, that, that, you know, or, or need, I should say. So yeah, the, the numbers here, yeah, we would have to work those out in terms of what that benefit would be.
Yeah, and I have, and I have no idea what the numbers would be for four K or siblings or Wausau School District employees, I just think we really have to maximize that before we get to that outside step.
Okay, good, thank you.
I don't want to assume, but that was a part of the discussion, was it not? That we would have that priority with our, our employees?
Yeah.
From the very beginning?
Yes, what we have to do, there's going to be two, if the board agrees in concept to this, there'll be two pathways going on. One would be working more on this, this business model and what those numbers really are. That would have to come back to the board for approval. At the same time, again, if you're in theory in, in agreement with this, we'd start working on the, the schools too, so we know what the capacity of that school could be. How many children could be served, and then what portion of those would be ours.
To, just to further explain kind of why I'm thinking this way. And so if we're going to justify to the taxpayers why we're keeping a building open rather than selling it, I need to be able to say, well, providing childcare for four K students encourages them to enroll in four K, we get funding for four K, that pays for it and then some. That four K student becomes a kindergarten student, now we have, we have funding for, you know, all the way through twelfth grade, that pays for it and then some. Allowing our employees to have childcare there is what makes us more competitive for hiring high-quality staff, you know, those kind of things. When it's that, I can easily justify keeping a, a building available for childcare, but if it's keeping it available so somebody else unconnected to the district can make use of it, I say that's a community benefit. But it's not really a direct Wausau School District benefit, it'd be a lot harder to, to justify that.
Yeah.
In my mind.
And that's part of the, the why in that previous was all those other benefits. The other piece, of course, is just location. You know, if, if we have four K and, and childcare for our employees, having it on, in, in different areas across the district is beneficial to, to our employees as well. Yes, agreed with that. Did you have something to add to that, Bob?
Fundation? Community service.
Yeah, you've been looking into that, you have a
Just preliminarily reaching out to other districts in the state that do this, many, many districts that are small do it. Very, very few districts that are large do it. Very, very few districts that are large do it. Of the districts that do it, many of them use fund eighty as a funding mechanism. Not only the fund eighty levy that you see every annual meeting, but the accounting running through fund eighty. And one thing that's required of us, if we're going to use a fund eighty levy, is we have to make it equally accessible to everybody in the community. Our students, other students, we don't have to make it available to people beyond our tax base. We don't have to make it available to people from Merrill or anything like that. If we wanted to make it more available for our employees, we could keep it in fund eighty, but offer those employees a benefit like a health or dental benefit. Right? So there is a way we could incent our employees to use it. But if we're going to use the fund eighty funding mechanism, we have to be careful. Because there are rules that insist that we make it equally accessible for everybody in the community.
So just to be aware. But I think we would have to be careful of using the fund eighty funding and not having it focus on Wassa School District because what I don't want to say is, yeah, I'm raising your taxes so that you so that you can pay for the childcare of somebody else in the community that doesn't even go to the Wassa School District. Because it's going to either reduce the cost of childcare or make it more available or whatever that might be. No, no problem with that if it's benefiting the Wassa School District, but I it's going to be hard to get me on board if it's anything other than we have some extra open spaces for people not connected to the Wassa School District.
Bob, can you share what? I'm I'm assuming larger districts do provide this benefit to their employees, but you said they don't typically go down the fund eighty path?
I have yet to find a large district that offers this benefit and runs the daycare or childcare in one of their buildings. They may offer a benefit. I haven't found them yet where they pay for a benefit like a dental benefit. Unless you know of any.
I have not.
Unable to find one.
This would be unique for a district our size.
What what competitive advantage or what intel do we think we possess with the why? That's going to allow us to get this successfully over the goal line when others can't independently within the community? Like, why do we think this is going to work?
Yeah, I think other districts can make this work. Um, this was really, I think, emerging as the need for childcare really ramped up and uh and some creative conversation within the Marathon County, this uh this dream up grant. So the reason that we think this will work um is because if if we have so so the basic premises of this new model is that the childcare providers, one, they have a really hard time keeping employees because the the pay rates are very low. The why has been able to keep more competitive pay rates and benefits for their childcare employees. So they're um one of the more attractive, large licensed employers in this area. So what they're looking for is, like a lot of businesses, reduce costs so they can pay employees more and retain them because they have pretty high turnover in this particular uh area. So if if we can help reduce their costs and get our employees a benefit so that they can pay their employees more and keep their retention rates higher, they'll be more successful and will also be increasing the capacity for the number of childcare uh children they can provide care for. Did I help answer?
I just remember the guy coming to Wassa West when he were first advertising this whole thing and he said that they're having, as you said, they they can't keep people today. So we think by offering them a building that that's going to create an abundance of childcare providers who are then going to come work for the why and make this happen.
We would be reducing their facility costs because we would maintain this.
So then they could offer more money to.
So then that needs to be reflected in whatever this overall business model is in terms of because there goes another building that we're going to close by elementary consolidation, but we're going to keep open.
Right, that's why I said it. I I can see myself on board if it's benefiting the Wassa School District. Not if it's, even though I think it would be good for the whole community.
Right.
If if we didn't put a single Wassa School District connected child in there, it would be good for the community because this is needed. But I, that's not our role. We don't have a budget to do that. So I I would need to see it be directly connect benefiting the Wassa School District, which indirectly would would relieve from some strain from other locations in the community, but.
I wholeheartedly agree with that. And if that means that we can't go down the fund eighty path, then I, I mean, I guess I, it's important to me to explore whether we can do this without fund eighty. Because I agree wholeheartedly with what Lance is saying and I think it's a great benefit to offer to our employees and we want them to have the priority and if it has to be equal with the community um in order to use fund eighty, that's really difficult to justify to the taxpayers. Even though it is overwhelmingly great for the community, that's not our role as a district. And so I just think we need to be really cautious because it's one thing to offer a benefit to our um employees, but I don't think we should be subsidizing even our employees childcare. We're we're giving them a benefit by having them increased access and in the district and nearby, but I don't think we should be paying for their and subsidizing for their childcare. And I don't think we should be subsidizing for the childcare of other community members that are not connected to the district. As much as that would be a wonderful thing to do, it's certainly not the responsibility of the taxpayer.
Bob, I assume that this would come with a very detailed cost benefit analysis as a multi-year financial pro forma that we would have to approve.
We have not done that. I want to make sure we're comfortable with the concept and then absolutely we could we could develop.
The number I'm curious about, Bob, is when we were been talking last couple of months about doing mergers, we're going to save, you know, one point six, two million dollars, whatever those numbers were, right, that you you had shown us before. How does how does keeping two buildings open, open and, right, we still have operational costs with those and and things and how that all fits in? I'm not going to, you know, I don't expect an answer today, but that needs to be within the material back.
In general, uh, the last pro forma that I shared, I believe, maintained two of our buildings as four K slash childcare centers. The operational savings that we have in closing buildings comes from closing the building and not having to fix the roof and heat it run electricity to it. It's also staffing. Staffing is the big savings actually in the operational savings. So you could conceivably close a building, still have some capital improvement costs, obviously. You have to fix everything. And that would be in your business plan with your partner. It'd be clearly laid out who's going to incur those costs. But the staffing, we would still recognize those savings, right? We're closing a building. Think of pick your building. Half of it is a four K facility that is run out of fund ten, just like any other building. Half of it is a childcare center that we'd have to have an agreement with a partner where the capital comes from to improve it, electric bill, heat bill, but staffing would certainly not be us. That would be on that partner. And dividing it in fund eighty, fund ten, there are two different reasons. One is for the fund eighty levy, but another is in some cases, a bookkeeping and accounting necessity to keep it separate from fund ten because fund ten is four K twelve, right? So some districts I talked to keep it separate in fund eighty even though they don't levy a nickel, right? They don't access the fund eighty levy. They keep it separate in fund eighty and they don't have to levy anything because it's net neutral. They charge enough for all their expenses. Some of them lease space to another provider. Some of them own it themselves. There's a lot of combinations. The ones that do the best job of it, as you can imagine, are the campuses that are K twelve all in one location. Those are the ones that really do a good job at this. You can imagine why. Everybody's in the same location. Everybody comes to that same common location and they go home. So.
I'm surprised, Bob, because this is uh, this has been talked about since probably two thousand and ten, you know, helping employees with their their childcare and that. I'm surprised that bigger districts haven't been exploring this as much, even though you just gave a reason why the smaller districts do it because usually it's K through twelve is in one building, but I'm just surprised there hasn't been more discussion on this.
I'll continue to try reaching out, but maybe I just haven't found them yet. Uh, through Wasbo, my professional organization, I put out a peer-to-peer uh query probably a year ago almost. Who out there is doing this? I'd like to hear from you. And I heard from some of them and another business manager in Southwest Wisconsin had a survey that he had some people fill out. And I just didn't see big school districts completing the survey or getting back to me. There might be one out there. We'll keep looking for it.
Be curious if the why or and I apologize, I forget the um woman who came and presented and said there's a sixty percent reduction in available daycare spaces in Marathon County. Is it a function of we have an unfortunate situation where we don't have enough YMCA's or childcare providers larger uh to support the need in this community and other areas like Sun Prairie or more metropolitan areas have a larger capability to 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 help with the capacity of childcare? Are we just in an unfortunate situation where, you know, we don't have enough larger daycares um to to support the need in the community in this particular part of the state?
And the labor market certainly has something to do with it. The the childcare centers are having a hard time hiring people at the wages they can afford uh because people are working elsewhere. That has a lot to do with it as well.
Yeah. Yeah, many of them uh you know, shut down through the the pandemic and haven't returned.
I think one of the other issues is that because a number of the individual smaller uh people that were providing in-home daycare are really caught up with the COVID thing and then with all the licensing requirements and those sorts of things that the larger uh organizations can handle. Uh, I would be curious, I understand that they've got three hundred and fifty people now. If we had this this kind of a service available, I wonder what would happen to the potentially to that number. I'm also concerned about staffing and from the beginning when we started talking about this, I wanted to be sure that we weren't getting into a competitive battle with all the other daycares in the community that are run at other at various of other facilities and churches and whatever. Because if if we're offering that, we may ultimately in the community not really gain anything. So I just want to be sure that we're not getting into a real competitive structure with uh with other providers in the community. I do see the real need for this. It's been a need that this community has had for a long time. So uh I will appreciate more uh information.
I have one more. Sorry to belabor this, but you um, this is the first time I've really discussed it in earnest. You brought up something new. Um, you mentioned rental, so if we're in a situation where, for example, we said we need this building for four K, but it only takes up half of it. And we're renting out the other half. Now you're going to have a much easier time getting me on board, even if that other half isn't dedicated to Wassa School District. Because we need the building anyway. We're renting out half of it. It's helping cover our expenses. I'm not saying that we have to go down that path, but just you mentioned rental, so um I know that if if we charge rent, then that takes away from the benefit of allowing them to have the space and pay their employees more and have steady staff. So I know there's give and take there, but just you brought up rental, so I wanted to comment on that.
So I would, I would be interested to know what the cost would be to the Wassa district families? Because if it's, if we have the slots available for these Wassa district families, but they can't afford it because the cost of childcare is is expensive. Um, I would, I'd be curious to know what the cost of full care, full um childcare and part-time childcare would be to the families since since we're we'll be taking care of the buildings for the YMCA. They'll be in charge of hiring and managing the employees. So I would like to know what the cost would be.
To the families to for childcare through the why?
My my concern, Keith, would be that you don't have on here because of the way you're presenting it. One way I interpreted it was that um, you know, mom and dad right across the street, potentially from our facility, may not have the opportunity to to take their kids across the street and then they go off to work. I want to make sure that I'm interpreting this correct because I'm I'm hearing a benefit for our district employees. And then you had other businesses could purchase the slots. When I'm saying, I think like Joanna's suggesting, you know, the people in the neighborhood or close by may want to use that service and are we eliminating, are we not allowing, you know, our district families? Then in that fashion to be the other people who take up the open slots instead of, you know, like suggesting sell into businesses?
So this is a a business model that the the YMCA is is exploring. I guess what I would say is if, let's say we have two hundred kids in this space and it's only available to people who buy the slots, that makes two hundred more spaces available outside and other existing that are available. So we're just adding capacity. I I don't know about just other families having access to it. I don't know what that would look like.
Well, my, I would want the Wassa people that work for the Wassa district to have the first, you know, the to have the first slots and then once those slots are taken up, have the families. But my concern is is cost. I'm looking at daycare full-time cost for a week is three hundred, around three hundred and fifty dollars. That does add up. So if we have these slots, but the families that work for the Wassa district can't afford them, then it's not really a benefit for our district.
So you're at the beginning of all of this, correct? We're asking some questions that are pretty down the road, not straight up front. This is a a proposal that you're going to be talking with some other childcare people to see if they're interested in it. So you know, we could sit here and start picking away at these questions and continue this for another hour, but uh I think the idea is to take a look at this, correct?
And I and I also was curious to know if there were any other childcare providers that were consulted on our plan or was it just a YMCA because they're a um large licensed childcare employee.
We've only spoken to the YMCA. We were talking to some other um providers who currently wouldn't have the capacity to do what we're asking to do. If, you know, if the board were interested, again, in this model, um, you know, we could do an RFP and see if there's some other other providers that might be interested. Not sure what that would look like because as you, as you can imagine, there's a lot of variables here. And I am not a childcare provider, so that's why I'm really relying on them to help develop the business model. Because they know their own costs and opportunities.
We have a need through the restructuring and consolidation for where four K students are going to reside, correct?
Yes.
So we could get through this and um decide potentially as a option that you know, we don't like what the plan presents for childcare and maybe we start or have one of the schools be used as a full four K facility and then the other facility, unfortunately, we can't keep and and we're going to sell that or
Right.
Or maybe uh the plans that are brought forward make sense. And as Lance has said, maybe there's some sort of a lease or or if there's not, at least maybe some costs that the daycare generates, you know, help maintain um the facility or, you know, obviously there's exam, you know, examples that could play out here. And 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 options. So obviously, like you said, Genesis in the beginning stages, so. But there is a need for where four K students go through the consolidation and restructuring, so that has to, they have to have a home.
Yes. I think the last slide on here just talks about, you know, if this is agreeable, then um, we could, you know, rough out business plans, we could bring it back to the board for feedback and approval and then would obviously, you know, require the approval of both governing bodies, so. And I think that's it, right?
And you're not asking for a motion right now.
Nope, just want to know.
Giving us information.
Is this of interest? Right. Should we continue to explore this option?
Good. Well, thank you very much doing that and exploring it. Uh, it could be nixed if it doesn't benefit the Wassa School District down the road. All right, well, last uh two weeks ago, um, a discussion point came up in our meeting and it was a part of the restructuring, uh pertaining to getting more information from the community in different ways. And it was asked to have this put on the agenda for today and I thought it was a very good idea because I did not hear that discussion two weeks ago and it'd be, uh, it would behoove me to be able to hear what's going on.
Two weeks ago and it'd be uh it would behoove me to be able to hear what's going on with uh this discussion point as well. And so with that, I'm just gonna say the Wassa School Board will discuss the possibility of offering an advisory referendum. And or a community survey to ascertain the level of understanding of the needs and projected outcomes of the district restructuring. Effort as well as the level of support for such an effort. With that, I'm going to open it up for discussion and move from there.
I I brought it up, uh Jim, so I'm I'm happy to start off the discussion, but it's just. The changes that we're talking about and the magnitude of those, I think we've all understood for a while are significant. They're significant from um all stakeholder perspectives, be that taxpayers, staff, students, families, um et cetera. And I know the board has been receiving um emails on with with support on both sides. Of of where we sit today in terms of uh the the restructuring and the plans that have been. Or at least the concept that has been approved so far. I I don't think it would be a mistake at all to go to the people that we ask to fund our schools. And ask for their input on what they feel um would be acceptable or not. Relative to different components of this plan. These are the stakeholders and whether someone is a parent, whether they're a taxpayer, whether they are a grandparent. Um everyone has different interests. And I think that the only way that we can collectively measure what those interests are is by doing a advisory referendum. I think it should be split into a few different questions. Um because I think to do it in one big one may skew some results and may point us in a different direction. Because at the end of the day, what I'm personally interested in as a board member is where do people stand on this overall issue? My 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 stake in the game is nothing more than representing the the voters and the stakeholders, right? I mean, I think that's what we're all here for. So if we have a better measuring stick. And a much more comprehensive barometer on where people's heads are at relative to this overall plan. I think that that is only going to benefit us in helping us make better decisions down the road. If it would come back ninety percent, say, this is great, wonderful, let's keep moving ahead, certainly changes my perspective. But if it comes back ninety percent, you know what? Maybe this isn't the best thing relative to middle school and moving fifth grade there. Or maybe this isn't the best thing for merging two high schools if it comes back, whatever it would be, eighty, twenty the other way. I think that that should at least cause us reason to pause and perhaps reevaluate where we're at and the direction that we're going.
I would agree with your multiple questions. I think that'd be a good good way to go at it. But one of the questions should be also presented that if it is a ninety against type of idea. Then this is what it's gonna cost the taxpayers and you we need you to approve additional funding. That exceeds revenue limits to keep it the way it is. Which is unreasonable because there's a lot of people who are in fixed incomes and cannot afford anymore in their taxes. So there's gotta be a middle ground, but that should be asked too because we don't talk about that very much.
Well, you I mean, yeah, I I don't disagree with that. Either way, this is the same group that we're gonna have to go back to at some point in time. And ask for funding for something, whether that is to right-size elementary schools, to house K through five or whatever it is. I mean, we already are gonna be over capacity at South Mountain. If memory serves me right, we're gonna be at a hundred and six percent. Post consolidation. So uh we're gonna have to fix that at some point. We can't do that for free. So if we circumvent this now and don't get the support of the public. I don't think there's a snowball's chance in hell that we're gonna go back to the same group and say, oh, now can we have some more money down the road?
Just a clarification on on South because we just had this meeting. Um South under this under this merger will have three more sections than it currently has. But we're adding six classrooms to it, just for that perspective. It will be over the ninety percent capacity um plan though. But my que- question for Corey though, what would stop somebody from saying, voting no, I don't support mergers? And no, on the next question, I also don't support increasing your revenue. I mean.
Well, and and that's that's like what we don't talk about. I completely agree with that and I'm sure there'll be community members that do exactly that. Then what do you expect us to do? Well, we increase fees, we cut programming. We we move coaches around, we move other staff around, right? We minimize everything and that's, we've heard that. Uh multiple times from the administration about how we've done that for twenty years. So i- if they're not gonna be okay with some kind of change. Not saying that the outline that was, you know, you guys approved isn't what it is, but you have to be open to some kind of change. Or or you gotta pay more.
That that's why I would suggest the multiple questions because the feedback that I have heard isn't, it's not completely against the concept in general. It is usually centered on a few specifics. And at the end of the day, I I try to think, what is the drawback of doing this? What would what would be the negative of getting this level of feedback? And I'm struggling to come up with any. I just can't figure out why we wouldn't want to know this. And have a real good measuring stick on where the community's heads are.
Um well, just to respond, I have well first I have a few que- like what questions would you ask? When you said you'd want multiple questions, can you give me an example of what questions you would put out there?
Do you approve of moving fifth graders to middle school in a fif- five, six, seven configuration? Do you approve? That could be one. The second could be, do you approve of merging the high schools into an eight, nine? And ten, eleven, twelve configuration? And the third could be, do you approve and there would be more commentary or color around this. But do you approve of consolidating elementary schools um, you know, for the purposes of saving whatever, whatever it would be? I personally, I would think that hitting those three areas gets at the heart of what we've been talking about and what's been discussed.
I guess to respond to you saying what what's the drawback? I think the drawback is if we s- because I guess I beg to differ a little bit about what our role as a board member. Our role as a board member is actually to um establish policies that advance student learning and success. And so some of that is um really not just what's popular. It's about the bigger picture, about what advances students um success. And so I guess I've thought a lot about this and I've talked with countless community members, teachers, administrators, and I think it's important for us all to recognize. No one is glad that we're in the situation that we're in. And I think we all wish our state funding had kept up with the needs and the inflation in order to provide the dollars per pupil that we need. And, you know, we all wish that enrollment still kept our twenty buildings packed, right? We all wish that our district growth was equal on the east and the west side. We all wish that the academic and extracurricular activities were equal no matter what building you were in. We all want that, right? We all wish we weren't in our district and in the nation in a labor crisis. That is creating shortages in our educational staff. But the truth is, we are there. We are there. And so we as a board are tasked to address those things and no plan's gonna be without challenges. No plan is gonna please everyone. And I feel like we know administration needs to figure out busing. And we know they need to figure out parking and they know they need to figure out what are the best solutions for the staff. Um but districts all over the state and nation are having to do this right now. And they're difficult decisions and schools are merged and closed all the time. And it's the experts, those who are responsible for running the district, that have to make those decisions. And it's not because community members' voices aren't important. They're highly important. They're super valuable. I've been listening to them and even seeking them because they're the ones that um they dictate my questions. If I haven't asked them, I wanna know what their questions are so that I can ask them. And so their voices are super valuable to me. And I'm a community member too, right? And so are you. And so I think those voices are important and they drive those questions and they drive um the details that need to be considered when these big decisions are made. But the community, community members, while they're capable of understanding the issues, I fully believe that they are. They are not responsible for making sure that this district is sustainable. And moving forward with the best educational opportunities for all students for decades to come. That's not, that's not their responsibility. That's yours and mine and the administration's. And so I think they come with an opinion that best serves their own personal interests. And of course it does. That's understandable. It's their priority and that makes sense, of course, but that's that's why they come with a different um perspective that isn't the big picture. And I think that's why um it's a it's a different look. And I I would be offended as a community member if I gave my input. And then the board or the administration says, thanks for the input. We still have to address these challenges. And we're gonna ignore it or, you know, like, I guess that's not valuable either.
Well, no, but what what is valuable to the community is exactly what you said. It's our job to set policy for the district, okay? If the community at large does not approve of the policy that we set, it'll take two elections and that policy is gonna change. Because you won't be here, I won't be here, this'll all change, just like it has over the last two elections. And whatever that policy is that you set, that was for the bigger picture and the grand scheme of things, is gonna go out the window and they're gonna move it back to the way that it was.
Right.
So by not doing that, why, I mean, why would we be fearful of hearing something? Even if it is against what you think is personally best for the long-term success of the district. Why do we not wanna hear that and understand where everybody's head is at? We have a year to educate people on how great this is.
That's the biggest point, Pat. You shouldn't look at us and and if if you get, if if they come and vote, you give them an opportunity, right? And if they vote no, they say no, you can, you could ignore them, but I think a bunch of people feel like they're being ignored now, first of all. And second, Pat's totally right. You have a whole year to find the details and and sell it and make everybody understand. Before they even gonna get the chance to vote because it's not till April twenty-four.
Well, here's the thing. I really look at this like um it's as if a physician was saying to a patient, listen, you're sick. And you need surgery. And a person can refuse surgery, right? And they can say, I don't believe you, I don't think I need surgery. Or they can think, the physician's lying, I surely don't need that, right? Or a person can acknowledge, you know what, there's an issue and I need surgery. And while I don't like that and that's gonna really hurt, I can appreciate on the other side, there's gonna be good outcomes from that. But what I don't think we're ever gonna hear is that person saying, man, I'm so excited I have surgery coming. Like, I'm so glad I have to do that. No one's glad. None of us are glad that we're in this position. But we wanna do what's best for students and staff and families in the community in the long run. I don't, it's it's not um in my best interest. It it I guess personally, it'd be a lot easier for me to ignore this issue and to keep kicking the can down the road. That would be a lot easier for me personally, but I can't ignore the disparities that continue. And having spent an entire summer learning about the issues. I can't ignore the problems and the challenges that we're facing as a district anymore. And because that's not why I was elected, just to make it easy for me.
But if someone's told that they need surgery, they also have the option of getting a second opinion.
Of course.
So that's what I'm saying. We're getting another opinion.
Well, except that you would agree that they the the experts in this whole situation are the people. The administrators and the teachers who are seeing the challenges, right? They're the experts.
I don't know if I'd go that far, but.
Well, I can't ignore like the thousands of collective hours that have been put in by our administrators and their presentations. And the teachers who keep coming to me. There's no hidden agenda. They want to do what's best for students.
We have a hundred and seventy-five pages of PowerPoint that describes why this is what gonna be done. We would now have twelve and a half months to actually crystallize those hundred and seventy-five pages of PowerPoint. Into a meaningful message that clearly states what the value propositions are.
Well, we still have people saying, why aren't we just doing boundary changes? And do you know what bound- hang on a second. I really think this is important because this is. For sure, for sure. Well, I I think it's valuable. Oh, for sure. Well, we're buddies. We're not fighting. Well, I think, you know, we still have people saying, why aren't we just doing boundary changes? And it's interesting to me because here's the thing, it's brought up so often that I think it needs to be addressed. Boundary changes don't address the disparities in academic opportunities. Boundary dresses uh uh changes don't address the severe labor shortages and issues in getting educational staff. It doesn't address the redundancies across buildings that lead to more expense and fewer services. It doesn't address the imbalance of growth west and east. In fact, it's a temporary fix that will need to continue to happen over and over. And maybe even more critically, if we do boundary changes, do you know who's gonna be bearing the burden of that? All the kids in the city, around the river. So the kids closest to west and John Muir are gonna get bussed over to the east side. And those kids and families tend to be our lower-income families. And I'm pretty sure that the community is not gonna be real excited when we say, you know what, lower-income families, we're gonna sock it to you. You're the one who's gonna bear the burden of this issue. I don't think people are gonna be real excited about that and I am rightly so. So I think there's a lot of misinformation out there about what they think is gonna be this great solution. We've explored them. That's what the subcommittees have done. And so it it's unfortunate to me that there's um a wave of mistrust and misinformation. I feel like I can speak for everyone here that we want what's best for students and families in this community. And no one is glad that we're in these positions, but we've gotta do something that's right.
I don't know that I can add much to what Karen said. I wholeheartedly agree. Um I really believe it's time to come together as one uh community, one district. Uh the efficiencies that can be gained through this. Um and the educational outcomes and opportunities uh that can be forthcoming in this plan. Far outweigh some of the concerns that that I've seen addressed and and expressed by those in the community. Busing, for example. Um and and Lance, I think you said it best last week. If if you would be voting no on something like this because uh you believe class sizes are are increasing, you'd be wrong. If you if you were voting no because you believe kids are gonna s- sit in a bus for two hours, you'd be wrong. Um there are levers and things that can be pulled in the next two and a half years of planning to either potentially re- reduce and maybe even fully mitigate. You know, some of the busing, you know, concerns that that exist. There's a, there's a lot of time to really carefully plan. And and even work with city administrators and and council to uh talk about traffic patterns and things of that nature. There's a lot, lot that can be done. So I I I very much agree with with uh Karen that, you know, the 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 time is now to to act on on this and which we have and um, yeah.
So let me get this straight, right? You wanna propose a multiple-question referenda that asks this question in twenty twenty-four, April of twenty twenty-four. With the specific question.
With these specific questions. Okay, um, I, I understand that. What, what, what's your proposal we do in the interim then, in the meantime, over this next year? I mean, do we continue going forward with our, what we're doing, proposing, you know, as far as consolidating? And, you know, all these other things that we already discussed and approved back in our February meeting. Um, so your proposal, we continue to go through, but then use a referenda to kinda guide us? I would rather see more of a dynamic input in guiding us throughout these processes as we go forward. I think a referendum is a static spot of information that people will give us. Based on um what they feel is the information being proposed. I think the best way to address it, if you wanna, i- i- I wholeheartedly agree with everything Karen said and um what John said. I think moving forward, if you want to continue to get community input, to continue with that trust. We need to have a more dynamic way to get their input. Because we spent a full three and a half months this summer with community at-large members talking about what the best way was. And we listened to what that subcommittee said, and the proposal that we voted to go forward with was what the subcommittees came up with as the best. Not that it was great, I mean, it's a true dilemma, there were no good solutions. We can't continue with the status quo, but we need to do something for the future of this district. And the three and a half months spent with these, with the, the subcommittees and the administrators working, that's kind of what we've approved. I'm all about getting more and more information, but I think in a more dynamic manner as we go through and make these changes come up with different curricula. Like the proposed business plan tonight for having child healthcare. I think, you know, that, I think that's all great, let's move forward with it. But these guys have already spent countless hours that they're working to give us these ideas and these plans. I, I guess that, that's my main input for it. I don't think a referendum i- is really. I, I understand the importance of referendum, but I, I don't think that that's gonna be a, a static line of information. Based on the way the wind's blowing at that time, so to speak. And I'm not, I'm not trivializing, all I'm trying to say is that we all, we all hear different segments of information at different times. And if we're hearing that, oh my gosh, you know, we're gonna have to bus people six hours one way, well, I'm gonna vote no. But that may not be true, so it'd be more better to have a continual dialogue, a continued engagement in the community. I mean, if we do it monthly, I don't care, whatever the administration thinks is best to engage the community so they can give us their input. So we can swell or squash these, this mis- misinformation that is so abundant right now out there about what's going on. So, that's all I have.
I, I think also, I think that we can do the contin- continual dialogue as well. I believe many people are going by emotion on this topic. Because we have done our best to have the community engage with us. We've had, you know, meetings at different schools and people have come out to voice their opinion. I, I believe that there are community members that no matter what some of us do on this board, it will never be right to them. Regardless of how we vote, because they just are not happy that some of us are on the board. And no matter what we do, it will not be right, because some people believe that we have a hidden agenda. I have no hidden agenda. Uh, there is nothing that I'm voting for because of my spiritual beliefs. Or because I'm more conservative, you know, I, it's, it's disheartening that people. Have made up what they think of me because of what I stand for. That's, it's just, I, I believe that there are people in the community that no matter how I vote, what I do will never be right. Because they, they did not want me on this board. So a lot of these people are the ones that are pushing back on the change that needs to happen. So I do understand that going to referenda would be to get more community input or opinion. But it's, we're not saying, you know, we, we're not open to hearing what you have to say. As we move along with the um restructure of the schools. I think we, we wanna hear from them in every step. And I, I think that going to referenda is just gonna divide us more. We, change needs to happen and we hear a lo- a lot of the boundary changes. And I just wonder how much information these people that are suggesting this have looked into. Because we've talked about the bound, changing boundaries and that, how that can only, it'll only be putting a Band-Aid on the issue. It's not gonna set us up for future. It's not gonna, like Ms. Vandenberg said, it's not gonna um address labor shortages, the expenses. And the imbalance growth of the east and the west. As myself being, growing up in a low-income community. I went to a school outside of my district because I wanted, I wanted to take certain classes that were offered at a different high school. I wanted those opportunities for me, so we are trying to. Have the kids in lower-income communities have better opportunities and be in better buildings. So I understand why you'd wanna go to referenda, I totally agree. I, I g- I want to hear more input, but I, unfortunately, I feel that some of these people, community members. Yes, they, their input is important, but they don't want the schools to close. And they don't care what the outcome is. They don't care if, if it's gonna be more expensive. Because we, we, we can't afford to have all these schools open in the future. It doesn't matter, they just don't want their schools to be closed, and it doesn't matter what the data is showing. They just don't want that to happen. And that's just how I feel. I, I feel that there are members in the community that no matter how I vote, what I do, they've already made up their mind of who I am. Without knowing anything about me, and whatever I do will never be right to them. So that, that's just my say.
Uh, I agree with it, with everyone here that this is a difficult and uncomfortable situation. And difficult and uncomfortable situations always create a certain amount of anxiety. On the other hand, uh, what I'm also concerned about is that the kind of complaints and concerns. That I'm hearing from a lot of people in the community are very, very self-focused and very, very accurate. And I think that we have to be sensitive to their concerns. I think that's what we have done and tried to do for the last several months. We've invested a ton of time and energy in coming up with solutions. That, that we know are difficult and painful for everyone. And yet there are decisions that uh have had to be made. And we've, the best way to deal with anxiety is to look at the facts, start looking at reason. And move forward. And I think we are in the position, whereas board, we have taken those kinds of actions and those kinds of steps. And frankly, I think that takes courage. I think it takes courage to lead. Now, along with that, I don't like the idea of a referendum, simply because you cannot. You're not gonna get that broader demographic feedback that you get from, from open meetings. And from, from positive surveys that are well-designed, that are raising exactly some of the same questions that we're talking about doing. And you're talking about doing that over gradually and getting feedback as we're making decisions along the way. So my, my thought is that there's a, one group out there that clearly, what uh you just said. There's nothing this board can do that they're going to support. And what they're doing is flaming fires of misinformation. And uh, and playing on the anxiety of people in the community. So the way, best way to combat that, I think, is to move forward. And then have a very, very broad, open communication with our, with our constituents. Again, and again, and again, whether it be public meetings or through what we do through our public media. But I think we need to move forward and I think we need to move forward uh now without a referendum.
I had something, and I think, oh, go ahead.
I'm done.
Um, to have this open communication, it's easier to stand behind a phone or a, a tablet. And, and you know, type up what you think. It's harder to show up to these meetings, go to these community engagements. And, and listen to the presentations and to the information. It's harder to do that. It's easier to stand behind a phone and, you know, say what you think and not show up to these meetings. Because we, we've had these meetings and we still, we have the school board meetings. And how many people show up to the meetings? You know, we had the most people show up to a meeting when they thought we were trying to sh- uh, uh, change. The uh sex ed curriculum, and that was not, that was not even near what was really going on. And even that till this day, people are still thinking that we are trying to change sex ed education. And that is not at all what we were trying to do. So people just, I think, like, there isn't anything some of us can do right. Because they've made up their minds about why we're on this board, which is not true. You know, we're not, I'm not having my lines, uh, my pockets lined with money to be here. I'm actually losing money being here and losing time with my kids to be here, because I wanna be here.
Well, I don't wanna just repeat what has been said or what I said last meeting, but I did wanna clarify one thing. Because since that meeting, I've had people contact me and say, why are you talking about doing this advisory referendum in over a year? That's pointless, you gotta do it next month. And I just want people to understand that um we can't do it next month. So we legally are not allowed to. We couldn't have done that last meeting either, like we, I don't know what the date is, but it's sometime in January, I think. And you really gotta backdate it cuz we gotta meet with council that drafts the questions and the resolution gets passed, so you, I mean, it'd probably be December, so. Just wanted to clarify that, that the reason that's been discussed is because that isn't an option.
Jim, I just want one quick clarification. Karen, you raised a good point about uh the, the boundary changes. And the assumption on what schools might be impacted, those closest to the river, which would be Franklin, Grant, Lincoln. And I think those are three of the five on the chopping block to be closed as part of this process. So from that standpoint, I don't know how they would feel any differently, rather than having their entire school closed. Or if it were to be realigned somewhere else. I, I, I truly don't know.
Just to respond to that, I, it was more in reference to balancing the numbers at east versus west. And less about the elementary school, it was more about the east versus west numbers and the disparities there. And in order to do, to, to normalize or equalize the numbers at east and west. It's only those kids that have to move. Real, I mean, primary, not only, I shouldn't say that. But primarily, those are the kids that would be having to bear the weight of solving the high school secondary issue. That's, so that we can get Horseman equal to John Muir and East equal to West, it's gonna be the river kids.
And they're solving sixty percent of the elementary issue right now, so I don't know how that's any different, but.
Just to kinda piggyback on what uh Lance said, a referendum.
Is that something that we have to decide on right now anyway?
Yeah, there's a process, it has to be gone through and all of that. I mean, if that's something that we wanna do down the road, we could do that down the road as well. It's not, since we wouldn't have to wait until the following year. We wouldn't even have to talk about the questions and that until like November, December, isn't that what we had talked about once before? Lance, it's a timeline situation that we would have to be following. So a decision right now, we wouldn't even have to have a decision today. But the biggest thing that I saw was we needed to have an open discussion with our whole board, which I think is very important. And come from different points of view. And, and that's my responsibility as president to make sure that everyone's heard. Everyone has a, a, the opportunity to have a point of view and bring that across. Because you're all talking with different people, as I am talking with different people in the community, and we're getting a lot of different information. So this is the only time that we get to really discuss the different points of view. And so that was my role here today, to make sure that we all are heard. And people that are watching online and things in, in the building here, get to hear what we're all talking about and what we're thinking. This is a tough decision to come down to, there's no doubt about it. As I was doing some reviewing today, I, I'm surprised how many school districts around the state of Wisconsin. Are talking about closing schools and combining schools. This is not unique to uh the Wasa School District. This is a struggle that's taking place around the state. And I think we need to be aware of that, but that's around the state. We're dealing with our local control and we need to be able to get as much information as we can from our community. And maybe listen a little bit more, maybe take some time to listen a little bit more. Because it's a great opportunity for us to get that information before we make any kind of decision as we move down the road. So that was, that's my two cents today.
Jim, I'd like to make a motion that the board consider drafting uh referendum questions to gauge community support for the uh. Plans that are currently approved.
There's a motion on the table.
I'll second it, cuz it's worth discussing.
We will have a discussion on that, the follow-up, okay?
Could I add a little bit to this? Uh, what I'm, what I'm hearing people talk about is um, you know. Repeated input from the community, in-depth questions, um really digging into. Um, kind of what people understand or don't, or support or don't. One, I don't know if, uh, I know in a regular um referendum, you're limited to two questions per year. So I don't know if the three that you proposed, I don't think we've had a chance to clarify, that would be a bond council question, if you can even do three on an advisory. But beyond that, you know, I also hear an interest in ongoing conversation. You know, so I, I wrote the, the draft um motion here, specifically with both a, a referendum. Or a, a survey in mind, I think Lance and Lee last time had talked about a survey. That is something that we could use on multiple occasions if we're interested. We could ask, we would be demographically representative. I know the complaint against it would be, you didn't ask me, because it's a phone survey and it's, it's a representative sample. Um, but we could ask all the questions we wanted to ask. Um, and at the very least, in this information campaign that we're talking about. We would understand where the points of understanding and misunderstanding are, where the points of support and lack are. So that would be another option if the board were interested in pursuing that. There is a cost to it, it's not, it's significant. I don't have an exact cost, we'd have to get a proposal, but I wanna make the board aware of that. Thank you.
And I think that's a separate, that's a, yeah, that's, that would be a separate issue. I think we've got a motion on.
We got a motion on the table and we'll stick to that right now. So follow-up questions pertaining to the motion. So if, and this is something that can be continued to be talked about as we move forward. So nothing is a dead issue as we talk about it.
Just knowing there was a request for a roll call.
Hang on a second then, so I just wanna clarify that the motion you have on the table is that we move forward to draw up an advisory referendum. Not what you're discussing, Dr. Hills, but instead of, okay. Because it's highly valuable to me to continue to hear from the public, continue to be um driving this decision-making process. Based on the feedback we're getting from the public, which is separate from an advisory referendum. Okay, thank you.
My interest was just to make sure the board's aware of that option before they take action on this one.
All right, so with, with that being the case, we have the, we'll call the question here and we'll have a roll call. And if you would take that role, I appreciate it, Ms. Becker.
This is draft questions to bring forward for an advisory referendum. Okay, John Creacher?
No.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Cody Nicolai?
No.
Joanna Reyes?
No.
Cory Sillers?
Yes.
Lance Trollop?
Yes.
Karen Vandenberg?
No.
Lee Webster?
No.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Five-four.
No.
Motion does not pass. And we will move on. Okay, we've got the five-year fiscal forecast. And with that, at the February Education Operations Committee meeting, the board was presented with the five-year fiscal forecast model for the district. The projection model will continue to be applied during the next three months to aid in constructing the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget reconciliation plan and ultimately the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget. It is critical to understand that the projections are the result of many variables that independently change periodically. As significant changes to the projections occur, administration will bring them to the attention of the board. Any addition to that? That is it. Okay, uh, moving on. At the February Education Operations Committee meeting, Dr. Jennifer Rousher presented the WIA co-op agreement for boys swimming to the, to the board. I'm seeking a motion to approve. Are you ready to add more? Go ahead, before I put the motion in front of the board.
When, when we were here before, the conference principals had not had the opportunity to vote on this within their meetings. Since then, they have voted and they voted to approve.
They did, okay. That's, I had anticipated that, but uh, thank you for that uh, information. So I'm seeking a motion to approve the WIA co-op for the boys swimming as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, continuing to move on. Uh, I'll be, I'm looking to, let me see here, Board Member Professional Growth and Development Report. Uh, anybody have anything to report to the board? Growth and development, nothing. All right, I don't have anything either. Legislative Lausanne, Mr. Webster?
Thank you. I sent a report to everyone. Uh, there is a, a WASB day at the Capitol on the twenty-second. Uh, and I am going to attend that. So if there are any particular things that anyone would like me to address with our individual legislators, I'd be happy to do that. Uh, the Joint Finance Committee has announced public hearings related to the state budget and is looking for public con- comment. That is in the report that I sent to you. Uh, there are the public hearings in Eau Claire and Managua, and there's also an online per- portal that's available. Uh, there's also a, a number of other things. And right now, the thing the legislature is primarily dealing with are issues that are, that are clearly related to the budget. And uh, and we're going to be hearing, and you're going to be hearing a lot more about that uh, from your next legislative representative. Uh, just of interest, uh, that in pertaining to the discussion that we just had, and I did not include this in the legislative report, uh, but it, it was in the WASB uh, pay uh, uh, material that there's a legislative council that's released a report of study committee on shared school services because what's happening is so many schools are having difficulty and they're having to consolidate and they're looking at consolidating services and districts. And so that is an issue that has been in front of the legislature and something that is certainly of concern as, as uh, we're, we're moving forward. The other thing to, just to be aware of is that every Friday at noon, uh, Dan Rossmiller and it will be doing a very relatively short presentation about what's happening in the legislature. You can tune in and it'll, it's a Zoom meeting and um, they're very interesting and there's an opportunity to question and raise comments. So thank you for the opportunity to uh, do this and I wish you the best. Let's move forward with contacting some legislators.
Thank you, Lee. Appreciate that. Uh, Dr. Hills?
Yeah, thank you. Um, want to bring attention to um, a really successful hygiene drive. Our community came out, um, hundreds of items were raised uh, for our students. Um, and Channel Nine, WAOW, um, uh, they, they took part in these, in this drive as well, and they selected our district to support. Uh, so you can see a lot of the commentary on, on social media. Diana White put it out. Uh, we're just very appreciative. We, we always get wonderful support from our community and our business partners to support our students. So I just wanted to uh, say a thank you to everybody.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Uh, I'm seeking a motion to, excuse me, before I go on, uh, would you put the paperwork in for our Lausanne report into record? Appreciate that. And now I'll move on. I'm requesting a motion to go into uh, closed session and I'll need a roll call on that.
I'll move that we uh, go into closed session for evaluation of employment supervision for schools pursuant to stat, section nineteen point eight-five, sub-one, sub-C.
All in favor? Or excuse me, you got a roll?
Take that.
I got it.
John Creacher?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Cody Nicolai?
Yes.
Joanna Reyes?
Yes.
Corey Sillers?
Yes.
Lance Trollope?
Yes.
Karen Vandenberg?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Nine-zero.
Motion carries.